Good morning. We're going to call the meeting for May 27th order. Would you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Could you please bow your head for a prayer? Heavenly Father, we beseech your divine guidance in this meeting. Keep us ever mindful of our obligation. Grant us, dear Lord, wisdom, tolerance, and courage that we may well serve our county and fulfill our trust.
Amen.
I will make a motion to approve the minutes of the May 20th meeting.
Second motion.
Motion, second, any discussion? I was not present at the meeting, but I have reviewed the minutes and will be voting to approve them. Roll call, please.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Next, a public comment regarding any pending resolutions. Is there any public comment for any of our resolutions that are on the agenda for today? No? Moving on to resolutions. First up, we have our Highway Engineer, represented by Dan Becker. Morning, Dan.
Good morning.
I've got four resolutions, I hope, for your consideration today. The first is approving change order number one for the contract for the TH-65 Spieth Road Bridge Replacement. The next is change order number one for the TH-78 Canard Road Bridge Replacement. The third is authorizing change order number one for the 2024 Friendsville Road Improvement. And the last is a necessity to close Mennonite Road for culvert replacement.
I'll make a motion to approve the four resolutions.
Second motion.
Motion, second, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Thank you. Have a good week.
Thanks, Dan. You too. Next up, Jeremy Cinco, Santerian Engineer.
Morning, everybody.
Good morning.
Four resolutions for consideration today. The first is authorizing change order number one for the Marx Road Water Main Replacement Project. The second is authorizing the Santerian Engineer to upgrade the existing blower building at the Plum Creek Maintenance Facility through a Qualus Group Competitive Bidding. The third is authorizing the Santerian Engineer to enter an agreement with Davy Resource Group for professional design services for the Champion Creek Riverbank Restoration Project. And the last one is authorizing the Santerian Engineer to enter into an agreement with Hazen and Sawyer for professional design services to assess the treatment plant processes at the Liverpool Wastewater Treatment Plant.
I'll make a motion to approve the four resolutions.
Second motion.
Motion, second, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Thank you.
Thanks, Jeremy. Next up, we have Holly Murin from our HR Department.
Good morning.
Good morning.
On our Personnel Changes Resolution today, we have one new hire in transit, ten rate increases, three at Job and Family Services, one at Maintenance, two in Sanitary, one in Finance, one at Senior and Adult Services, one at County Home, and one in Building, one fund correction at Senior and Adult Services, one leave of absence at Job and Family Services, one change of leave in Commissioners, and one termination in Transit.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second motion.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Thank you.
Thanks, Holly. Next up, Brett Thomas, Finance Director.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
I have nine resolutions for you. Our first one is a quick revenue adjustment. We had a small receipt for Public Assistance that landed in the wrong account. Our second resolution is cash transfers for various funds. The majority of this is to backstop our Capital Improvements Fund for some of the County Home Emergency Repairs. We also have a transfer for Solid Waste District because they receive their debt income through the, or the amount that they use for their debt fund through their operating. Our third resolution is cash transfer for the 4D reimbursement in the amount of $318,849.74. This is actually back a little ways. This is really for the October through December 2024 period. This change had, we had a couple alterations to the prior bills before we were able to submit them. So we'll probably have another one coming for the first quarter of '25 in short order. Our fourth resolution is authorizing appropriations for the Sheriff's onset grant for fiscal year '25. This grant fund already exists, so we are just moving some of our appropriations around for it. Our fifth resolution is approving an agreement for the Ohio Drug Law Enforcement Grant for the Drug Task Force. This is a grant in the amount of $122,615.82. Importantly, $30,655.84 is local match. Our sixth resolution is acceptance of the fiscal year '25 Recovery Ohio Subgrant Agreement between OCJS and Drug Task Force in the amount of $44,999.77. Our seventh resolution is the purchase of 7,000 gallons of unleaded gasoline for Engineering Center. As usual, our friends at Port's Petroleum have come in with the low bid for $2.35 per gallon. Wish we saw that on the pumps for us. Our eighth resolution is expenses for county officials. We have nothing that is out of state or retroactive. And finally, our ninth resolution is our weekly bills in the amount of $712,553.30.
I'll make a motion to approve the nine resolutions.
Second motion.
Motion, second, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Thank you, Commissioners.
Thanks, Brett. Next up, Matt Springer, County Administrator. Hey, Matt.
Hey, good morning. I have two resolutions. The first one is a resolution approving a lease agreement for a new Wadsworth Auto Title Location. As you know, we went through an RFP process. This is located at 1154 Hinkle Drive, which is the Home Depot Plaza. And then the second resolution is approving the use of virtual meetings for our revolving loan fund. This was a recent update in the revised code, and we're working with the Prosecutor's Office on the drafting of a policy for the use of virtual meetings.
I'll make a motion to approve the two resolutions.
Second motion.
Motion, second, any discussion?
Yeah, I think that new location out in Wadsworth, the parking will be so much better. I really think it'll be easier for the residents out there to use the facility.
Probably a little bit more visible.
Yeah.
Sure.
Roll call, please.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Thanks, Matt. Next up, Shannon Ryan, Transit Department Update. Morning, Shannon.
Good morning. Looking at our April performance, obviously ridership is maintaining. Actually, I've got some numbers that are very positive and an upward trend of higher ridership. I think the warmer weather is helping that. We did have four trip denials, unfortunately, to the outskirts of the county that we're working hard to make sure we drive that down. That's definitely below the 2024 averages of 18. So we're really trying to make sure, we only have two average for the '25 timeframe there. Our costs, really trying to control cost right now, making sure that the rising cost of fuel, our increases in labor and maintenance, we're really working hard to make sure we maintain cost to stay within budget. Looking at our ridership for the Senior Adult Services continues to stay high. Job and Family's evened out a little bit. We're really looking at our South Circular Service out to Amish area. We're trying to make sure that we provide service to them. We're looking at some alternative ways of contacting them, possibly a phone system like we do for other clients, or maybe a sign-in sheet at a general population location at a general store. So trying to get some South Circular conversations, public meeting with them. I've been out to their community center, didn't have a lot of response back, but working with a trustee, trying to make sure we get everybody involved. And I met with an elder about five years ago, and since he's not, he's since passed, so we have to make a reconnection out there. But we have a large population out there that needs our service, but we're running that basically like we've done it for a long, long time of driving and waiting for, but.
Is that more prevalent in Homer or Harrisville?
Homer.
Homer.
Homer. I think we tend to not leave anybody behind, but once in a while we do because the bus gets full. We're trying to make sure we establish the demand out there in advance rather than day of, which we've done. So we're going to continue to work on that. I did put a highlights page on the back, just highlighting some of the trending that I'm seeing that I've been talking about with ridership increasing this year. It's nice to see, basically in every area, we're seeing a rise in ridership. I did include some cost per mile and cost per passenger down below there. Really hopeful that our efficiencies and the way we're running our operation allows us to get it down. It's actually below 2022 numbers, but you'll see that, of course, the cost per mile is continuing to increase with the cost of all those things I talked about. So the team's working really hard. I give them a lot of credit when they're conversing with clients and explaining the service and making sure we can provide the service that's needed. So it's going pretty well. We're confident. We are looking at a new bus buy pretty soon. I went out and looked at some new types of vehicles, basically the same vehicle, but a different setup inside to allow them for more room and more flexibility with more space for mobility devices.
So will these be additional, or do they?
Replacement.
You need replacements?
Replacement. Yep, as they meet their useful life.
Right, very good.
Thank you.
Good job.
Thanks, Shannon.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, Debbie Haley. Job and Family Services. Morning, Debbie.
Good morning. First up for your consideration, three resolutions for your approval. The first is authorizing an agreement with West Publishing Corporation for location services for our Child Support Division. The next is authorizing the County Auditor to transfer funds from the County General Fund to the Public Assistance Fund for the county's mandated share. And the next is authorizing the County Auditor.
Second motion.
Motion, second, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Department Updates. I'm just going to stay focused on child protective. So our Child Protective Division, and actually all child protective agencies across Ohio, we're actually experiencing a troubling trend, which is the exponential rising cost of providing care for children in our foster care system, most specifically those that are in treatment facilities, either for behavioral health or substance use. This past year, facilities across the state have increased their daily rates to county JFS offices at a pace that's at times nearly 30% of what they've quoted us last year. So obviously far outpacing inflation. And because these children are in treatment facilities, that they require extensive and specific care, and there's no other appropriate place to put these children, counties are, we can't do anything other than pay those rates. So we're forced to pay those rates. Toledo and as far south as Cincinnati. And the workers are required to do visits every month, so every month workers are traveling either to Toledo or Cincinnati to visit with these kiddos, not to mention the work that happens in between there. So it's not just that those children are in treatment facilities, but that workers are having to drive to those treatment facilities. They use the van as much as possible, but we only have two, so then they're using their own personal vehicles to get to and from. Counties across Ohio, Medina included, we've seen an increase in children that need this high acuity type of care. So for example, in 2024, Medina had 120 children in care, and 15 of them were in treatment facilities. That's about 30. Care. The average cost for children in care is $500 a day. So those 27 children are averaging about $350,000 a day for those kiddos, if not more. It's over $350,000. That also doesn't include, that $350,000 is room, board, and the cost of services that they're receiving in those treatment facilities, but it doesn't include clothing, because these kids are growing. They need to, their average time in a treatment facility is running on two years. So they're growing. They need new clothes, they need new sweaters, they need new boots. They also need school necessities for their education while they're in these treatment facilities. And then that also doesn't include the cost of care for children that are in our traditional foster homes. So. They can go to work and make their own ends meet. So the cost of these children is incredibly expensive. I've actually met with management and staff to discuss these rising costs, just to keep them apprised. I've also left two vacancies in my, or in the division, the Child Protective Division vacant, so that we can absorb some of those costs. I won't be able to trim that anymore, because with 108 children in care, I need people to do the work to provide for those kiddos. I've actually joined a group of fellow directors on a rate-setting committee. It was created by the Public Children's Services Association. Last year, I received notice of a significant rate increase. It was going to be $900 a day for this one child in care, and I was. This rate-setting committee and asked if I wanted to join, and I said, "Sign me up." So we were able to get the attention of the Department of Children and Youth Director, Cara Wente, and she has part of her budget request, a rate card request, whereas the state will do an RFP or an RFQ to find an organization that will go out to all these treatment facilities and say, "How much are you charging? What are, how much are you charging? What are you getting for charging me that much?" And then share that with the state of Ohio, and then the state of Ohio can make that transparent to all county agencies, because right now those organizations are negotiating with all 88 counties. I negotiate one rate. Franklin County probably pays a much higher rate because they have more children and they have more money. So it's somewhat of a frustrating process right now.
You said it's 500 a day for those, roundabout, so it's 350,000 a month?
A month.
Yeah, okay. That's, so your.
Medicaid doesn't pay for room and board at these facilities, so that's the majority of the cost. Medication and psychiatric or substance use services are covered by Medicaid. We do receive some federal and state dollars as like what they call a match. So if we're front-loading that money and we can get some of it reimbursed, but some of the eligibility requirements for those children that are in foster care in general, treatment facilities or a foster home, it's based on the eligibility of the family. It's called 4E, before they left their home, and it's based on 1996 income standards. So it's ridiculously low. So the amount of those children that are eligible for that portion of federal reimbursement is greatly diminishing.
So what are they doing at the state level, aside from the?
A lot of attention paid toward us. We are patiently waiting for feds to come through with their portion of the budget. There is some federal allocations that if Title 20 and Social Services block grant, that if those are taken away or even minimized, it could be over $800,000 a year to the agency. So we are petitioning as much as we can to the federal legislators about, please don't take that away, because it's, it just only exacerbates this problem.
Of your 27 children that have the $500 per day rate, are any of them close to aged out, or are they all lower ages?
The average age in the facilities is 13, 13 and a half. So they could be with us until they're 18. There are, I think, four children that are in permanent custody, so they aren't being worked to be reunified with their families. So we will have them until they either are adopted or until they age out of our care. I do have this document here. It's Commissioner Hamley, to answer your question. It's CCAO's response. You may have already seen it, but I thought I would share it with you. Brian, there's one for you, too. But it's just talking about everything that I've already mentioned about the rising cost of care. I actually met with a few directors on Friday, one specifically from Ashland County and another one from Holmes, and we're all saying the same thing. Ashland specifically mentioned that I have less children in care, but the cost that I'm paying is much higher than it was when I had more children in care. There were some new rules, I think it was probably back in 2000, for family first at the federal level, that mandated a lot of these facilities to meet certain requirements. It's called QRTP, Qualified Residential Treatment, I forget what the P stands for, Policy. So they said, "Now I'm going to take my rates and put them up a couple of notches because of all these requirements that I'm now mandated to do." So there's a part of me that appreciates the position that they're in, but there's also a part of me that just wonders why it costs so much.
And if there were, were there, were there service providers who maybe left the industry with those new requirements, and so it's a more finite.
Exactly.
Service providers and.
Exactly.
And an increasing need and.
And these facilities can say no. When, I can't say no. When the phone rings and the judge or the police officers, law enforcement say, "You need to come take this kid," I have to do it. Then I call these facilities and say, "These are the behaviors that this child is displaying," and the facility can go, "No, we don't have the personnel," or "We don't, we don't have, we don't." And they, there's no consequence for them saying no. So that's part of what we're trying to do with this rate card.
Is there a attempt to increase the number of facilities?
Yeah, the state of Ohio, I think Governor DeWine has included a regional wellness campus. So it's, some of these facilities, that the children are receiving treatment from a trauma-based perspective. So if we can just like level out this child, then they can probably go to a traditional foster home, maybe one that has a higher level of training from a therapeutic perspective. So what they're trying to do is do those regional wellness campuses. So when I have a child that's immediately put with me and I don't have a place to put them, because these facilities are saying no, then I can maybe put it in the child wellness campus. They have done last year some financial incentives for these facilities to increase beds, because they're, there's.
That, you know, kind of is in that profile right now. Those are all, those have, all have the elevated needs that would require this type of placement, or is that also a product of a shortage of foster homes?
If we can put a child in a foster home, that's what we'll do.
So even, even with the shortage that we have overall in the system, these 27 aren't where they are because of a lack of foster homes?
Exactly.
Okay.
Yeah. There might be, let me take that back. If they're in a treatment facility, absolutely, that's where they need to be. There are some that are in group homes that are holding spots to level them out until they can go to a traditional foster home. But there are some that we might be putting in a, in a group home just temporarily until we can find a foster home. Because it's, even though I have foster homes, we have like, I think 50 in Medina County, and then others that are privately licensed, they might already have a child with them. They might be going on vacation, and I can't help you right now, but I can help you when I get back.
Right.
So.
That makes sense.
That's.
Thank you.
All I have.
We appreciate all the work that you guys are doing to kind of bridge these gaps, and we'll continue to work. I know this was on CCAO's radar for the visit we had with the White House last week, and it didn't come up in the legislative discussions too much, but it is on everybody's radar, and the National Association's radar as well. So hopefully we'll see some progress.
Yeah, I hope so. I hope so. Thank you.
Thanks, Debbie.
Very good. Thank you.
Next up, we do have a Commissioner's Resolution.
Yes.
And this is a resolution approving the appointment of our local Emergency Planning Committee members for Medina County.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second motion.
Motion, second, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Sweattick. I said Sweattick, yes.
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 Forgot film for posterity for our.
Yes. Next up is a public comment. Do we have any members of the public who would like to speak, please? So if you could come up to the microphone, up to the podium, and then state your name and your address for the record. That'd be helpful. Thank you. That's no problem.
Would you like a handout?
Hi, everybody.
Good morning.
And thanks for the opportunity to come here and speak today. My name is Nola Loether, and I'm a resident of Medina. And I'm here to urge the county commissioners to end or refuse to enter into any contracts with the U.S. Immigration and Customs Enforcement, known as ICE, which detains immigrants in our local jail. These contracts come at a serious cost to our values, our community's safety, and our public trust. First and foremost, cooperating with ICE to detain immigrants for federal immigration enforcement transforms our local institutions into extensions of a controversial and often abusive deportation system. ICE has a well-documented history of raids that tear families apart, detain people without due process, and subject individuals to substandard and inhuman conditions. The current ICE participates in cruel, dangerous, and increasingly illegal practices. When our jails partner with ICE, they become complicit in that harm. Any contract between ICE and Medina County must be transparent to the citizens. Second, these agreements create fear among local immigrant communities. Families are afraid to report crimes, seek medical help, continue to work, or send their children to school. This undermines public safety for everyone. Our law enforcement should protect the community and not act as an arm of federal immigration policing. Third, these contracts often fail to deliver the promised financial benefits. In many cases, counties may end up spending more on staff, liability insurance, and facility maintenance than they receive from the ICE reimbursements. Even more importantly, no amount of money justifies profiting from human suffering. Finally, housing ICE detainees contradicts our community's values of dignity, fairness, and equality. It targets people not for what they've contributed, but for who they are and where they were born. That's not justice. Our local resources, jails, budgets, and personnel should not be used to further an immigration system marked by cruelty and racial injustice. We have a choice. We can either be a community that uplifts human rights, or one that enables mass detention and deportation. And I urge you to choose justice. Thanks.
Thank you.
Any additional? Please.
Hi, I've been here before, so you know me, some of you. My name's Kathy Jones. I'm in Sharon Township resident. So I'm here today. I understand that there's six counties that are housing ICE immigrants. They contracted, the jails have contracted with ICE. And I'd like to ask you, if you can answer, do you know if our county has contracted, either through the commissioners okaying it, or the sheriff's department, have they contracted with ICE to use our jails for housing immigrants?
No, we do have a federal contract, but it's not with ICE.
And you haven't heard anything about it being asked here?
No.
Okay. So if it would come to that, from what I understand, from how other counties have done it, the commissioners would agree to it, or the commissioners and the sheriff? Which is it, or is it both of you? Do you know?
I don't, I think it'd primarily be the sheriff's call. I don't think we'd have.
You wouldn't have any say over it? Because I know.
There's a statutory authority for prisoners.
But Matt, I'm looking at Matt. If it comes in in the form of a contract.
Yeah.
We'd have some.
In the form of a contract.
That's what I'm saying. We're asking about contracting.
Have you talked to the sheriff?
No, I'm talking to you first, so I thought I'd see.
Why is it just talking to the sheriff?
I'm going to, but I thought I'd see what you know, because I knew if it was a contract, you would have some say over it.
I do believe the one that we have is U.S. Marshals.
Right.
We have one with.
U.S. Marshals.
Okay.
If they're, under the, I just say custody of the U.S. Marshals, we have federal prisoners. And we've had that for decades, decades, actually.
Okay, so I'm just going to reiterate a few things. I know that Nola covered these, but just know that I and many other county residents do not want the Medina County Sheriff to contract with ICE to jail immigrants in Medina County. We don't want our sheriff to become an ICE agent. And so the reasons for this are, and like I say, I might repeat some of what Nola said, but I have a list of them. If we do this, it will lead to costly lawsuits against the county and potential financial burdens to Medina County taxpayers. It will undermine public safety by diverting much-needed resources away from other safety initiatives. initiatives. It will decrease voluntary reporting of a crime. It will spread fear throughout the immigrant community. It will contribute to adverse childhood experience through fear of family separation. It will erode community trust in local law enforcement. More people without criminal records could be housed in our jail. It opens the door to racial profiling and unjust attentions. People will avoid moving to Medina County if it becomes known as an ICE county. Tourist planners and future residents want to see Medina County as a welcoming, vibrant community. It will hurt property values, and it will deter business investment. This is not just about immigration. This is a racial and civil rights issue. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Pauline Chapman from Monteville Township, and this is just a statement of how I feel about this whole situation. Medina has advertised itself as a quaint, friendly little town. In four years, when this lawless rule of law-breaking administration is gone, I don't want my hometown to be remembered as one where the greed for federal dollars succumbs to a lawless rule of law-breaking administration that's promoting, that is promoting a money-for-prison extortion plan. And I feel that's what is happening now. A lot of places are being extorted, and I don't like it. I don't like what's happening. I think our rule of law is being, it's being abused every day, and I just don't like it, don't like what's happening. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Dan? No? Okay, discussion session. Shannon, do you have anything for discussion session?
I do not.
Okay. Matt? John? No? Colleen?
I'm good.
Mr. Hambley?
Just a reminder, we have a public hearing tomorrow, 1:00. Development Agreement is open to the public. Anybody that's interested can field or attend, and as well as provide input regarding the developer agreement.
And there was a nice article, Brian, thanks for putting it in the newsletter, that the 531 was canceled, which we talked about before. It's clear on the agenda from this week as well. So yeah, it is just the 1:00 one at the Polte headquarters. I don't have anything else either?
Yeah.
Can I ask a question? What's the development reading about tomorrow?
It's a, it's a follow-up. We've had a couple of meetings already on a proposed developers' agreement for, with the sanitary engineer, highway engineer for subdivision.
It's part of our subdivision regulations, requirements that by contract provides the detail is what, especially for public improvements, like water sewer, roads, and all that kind of stuff, and the condition it has to be, and before it gets presented to the public.
Yes, Dan?
Just a comment for Shannon and yourself about the Amish. I represent 90 of those families out there, so I've been dealing with them for 40 years now. Main contact with the Amish for decisions is the bishop. You know, they have a lot of home churches. Also, a good meeting place would be the Grace Church out there by the Amish that built the church. The Grace Church out there in Tinsley Road, and in other places at the Auction House. That's crossing the border, I think it is now.
Yeah. I don't know. Yeah, where the auction is held, twice a week, I believe it is, but that's where they congregate. And many of them do have phones now. The phones are cell phones. They can't carry them with them, but several of them have Doctor Who booths, I call them. They have a phone booth out back by the barn, and then they just pick up their messages, and then they'll return calls, particularly the trades and the people that are in the business world. So just a couple comments that may assist you.
I'll take that information from you. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Shannon.
Great, yeah, that's a little added degree of difficulty in a rural public transit system.
I really appreciate the offering.
Yeah, appreciate everybody's efforts to make that happen. Okay, with that, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second motion.
Motion, second. Roll call, please.
Yes.
Yes. Yes. Thank you, everybody.